And specifically for ballet. And so that was heavy on our minds, how we could keep this three-year-old nonprofit moving in a positive direction. The school is located in the mini mall building downtown Florisville. And they perform, they conduct classes as well as office in that facility. The Peter Pan production is being held in La Vernea's Independent School District Performing Arts Center. And this is certainly a point of discussion. But again, like I said when I started, we look, we can only look at the application and hold whatever information is on that application or a post-event report as truthful information. And when we asked the director, Lyle La Vernea, she told us that she had looked in all the venues in Florisville, which includes the event center and some others, and that there wasn't adequate stage dimensions to house the large props that would be involved in this production, as well as a quite large casting crew. And that she had to go to La Vernea to try to find that. I think that this afternoon, I haven't checked with the applicant, but I'm sure that went on this afternoon, they had a free matinee performance with some 900 youth-aged kids from a different school district. And again, that's exposure to this culture of performing arts and the appreciation of it. Then on the 27th, the evening of the 27th, they're going to have a ticketed performance for the public. When we asked, when we asked the director about heads and beds tax with an event that happens in La Vernea, she said that she was directing anything that she had influence on, like outside production professionals and family members that were coming out of town to book hotels in Florisville. And like I've said before, we have to accept that as truth. And if this were to happen next year, we would ask that a post-event questionnaire be filled out and find out exactly how many rooms were rented for this event. But first year, we just had to take their word for it. And that the director said that she has a lot of cast that live in the Florisville area, and if they have grandmothers, grandfathers, uncles and aunts coming to see them perform, you know, that if they're still over, it's going to happen in Florisville hotels. And so those were the answers to the questions we had. The reason, I think, the most important reason that we felt that this was an appropriate $3,000 funding of the event was that, that basically we have a Florisville-centered nonprofit that's bringing a new cultural performing arts ballet venue into Florisville for the youth here, as well as within Wilson County. And that we, we wanted to help in some way, felt it necessary to help financially in a small way to help them promote this and market this production that's going on this So that was our recommendation. As, as you know, our mission is to give you all recommendations, and you all are the decision-makers with your vote, so.
Mr. Baker, this is a wonderful program, and we appreciate everything she does for, to teach them the art and culture. But this, the hotel motel taxes, it's, it's very specific on what we can spend it. And is the new advisory board, do they know how to allocate the hotel motel tax?
Yes, absolutely.
That's required by the state law?
Yes. And, and, you know, as I've said when I started this, first-year events are extremely difficult because we have to simply listen to and take for, take for gospel what we are told on the application, because we don't have any history.
Okay, because if you're in La Vernea, I mean, there's closer hotels to San Antonio than there is to Florisville.
Yes, ma'am. I totally agree with that.
Okay.
There are also a lot of students that are in the cast that live in Florisville.
Okay, what is the requirement for us to fund an event? What is the?
The first requirement is heads and beds.
And what does that mean?
That means hotel rooms that are occupied for the event.
So right now, we don't know if there's any hotel?
I don't, I don't. Because there's no history.
Okay, and there's other nine categories that go after that on step two, that we have to follow, or else we're misusing the money. Now, we can get in trouble with the, with the controller, the state controller, right?
Certainly. And, and we're following the nine different things that can, can, that can be used for each of those after that first requirement of heads and beds.
But the first requirement is not, and then the other nine, because I looked at the application and I couldn't find it. I couldn't find anything to, I mean, because of course, we want to give her the money.
It's a great complaint, but if it had been done during the city of Florisville, we would have a problem. She's come before, and we've helped her out before, you know, with other things, but it's in La Vernea.
I mean, I don't know how to, it also feels.
If it was in, or EKTV, it'd be great.
How many kids do you have in your dance studio that actually live in Florisville?
She's in the back, you can answer the question.
Well, I tell you what, grandma's coming here to visit a kid, and they live in Florisville, they're going to stay here in Florisville. So that's why I wanted to know how many kids are going to have, and how many grandmas could might be here to stay here. We don't know, it's the first time, so.
Councilmember, do you mind if I can ask that question?
The applicant come up, or does she need to wait until?
She can.
This is a discussion.
I must apologize, my voice is a little rusty. This afternoon, in fact, we had over 800 students at the La Vernea High School Auditorium watching a free matinee of the Peter Pan production. As far as your question that you'd asked, Mr. Neeson, Councilmember, our enrollment has actually tripled in one year. We have doubled the amount of performers on stage. And comparing to numbers, because at the end of the day, and everybody in here can be honest, numbers is what matters, right? So let me give you some hard facts numbers that I can actually back up. Councilmember Cantu.
Okay.
Last year, we only had 30 performers. We were the first school in Wilson County that did a two-act student ballet. You probably remember it, we did Cinderella. Same thing, we did a matinee show. We had last year for a student matinee, which for us acts as our dress rehearsal.
You opted it here, you opted it here, right? Or where did you opt it?
I'm going to get to that. I'm going to go kind of go down in order, so you know everything. Our Cinderella matinee hosted almost 500 students. This year, we had almost 900 kids come to our student matinee. As far as you're asking about activity done in La Vernea, let me just kind of speak with you real quick, so you can kind of get a full synopsis as to what the school does, why we need the space, and what we actually have already done here in Florisville when it regards to Peter Pan. Alone this month, in the month of May, we have already done 12 meet and greets. We've already gone to schools, we've already gone to daycares, we've already gone to the libraries. In fact, you can go see Peter Pan herself read to students at your Florisville library, I think it was two weeks ago. We are very active in the Florisville community. That is one of the reasons, Councilmember Cantu, our school is here.
Where did you all do the meet and greets?
We did them, I can go down in order, we did them at the La Vernea Library, we did them at the Florisville Library, we did them at the daycares in surrounding areas of La Vernea and Florisville. There's so many, I'd have to look at my calendar.
Did y'all notice how many you did in Florisville, the city of Florisville?
Correct. And then we also did, last week, I believe Mayor was there, we did a surprise meet and greet, door prize, for our Chamber of Commerce members, in which Ms. Eva won two VIP tickets to our Peter Pan production. Also, let me mention to, forgive my train of thought, what we do for our school. Our school does not put on your typical recital. It does a full-scale major production. And it's actually not just for kids. Our casting this year are for children ages four all the way through adults. So yes, Councilmembers, you can take ballet now. We in fact have adult performers this year that are pirates. Our Mr. Clayne, he's Captain Hook. So this is fully encompassing. Anybody can dance, we'll make it work. As far as the numbers go, can I speak to that real briefly? We have already tripled our amount of sales tickets from last year. People are coming. And Councilmember Nick, not just Grandma and Grandpa coming, we have a tron of public coming. This is not just for Mom and Dad, this is for the community of Wilson County. It took me a year to figure out what name I wanted to call the school, and I know that people in Wilson County are very proud of the area, and that's why we have named. I do want to make a small correction. We are not nonprofit yet. We have received our tax ID. We will have two entities. We will have a school that we currently have, and a separate nonprofit company called the Wilson Ballet Company that will be doing different things. The money that we're asking for today is exactly what you're right, heads and beds. Even I actually stayed in between the dress rehearsal and the big Saturday night show at the Holiday Inn. When you're rehearsing for seven hours a day, like I've already done today, with approximately 60 students, you're a little tired. And you don't want to have to drive all the way to San Antonio, which in fact where I live. This year alone, we've tripled the amount of guest artists, professional guest artists. One actually lives in Spring Branch. It takes her two hours to drive to La Vernea. I am offering her a hotel out of all pocket to stay, so she, one, is well-rested, two, less prevention injury, and three, like you just mentioned, yes, there are hotels in San Antonio. However, the drive time from Florisville to La Vernea, when you have to perform and get up at 5:00, 6:00 in the morning, is much better from coming from a very busy city traffic. That's why really, why we all live in the country, right? Less traffic, maybe? So I hope I answered some of your questions. Forgive me, like I said, if I haven't answered any. As far as the marketing goes, let me address that real quick. I have done more than enough marketing. I am working with the hotels right now, actually. They finally figured out that we're the real deal, and we're going to be partnering in hopes for next year. This is our first year of having a casting party. If you look at these 600 posters that we printed out, 11 by 17, they're around the county, we have the den as our casting party. It is the closest, most convenient restaurant to the auditorium. Just a side note, the other day, I asked my students, what do you want one day when you grow up? And they said, I want to dance, I want to perform. I said, well, I can make you a promise, but for the day I die, we will have a theater built in Wilson County. Where that is, I don't know yet, but I can promise you, we will. We need one, we deserve one, and there's no reason we shouldn't have one. We have three entities right now. We have a nonprofit theater group called La Vernea Shoe Stream Production, Productions, excuse me. We have a nonprofit county line band, hence their name, they don't have a home, so they're on the county line. And you will be having the Wilson Ballet Company. We need a home. My agenda in the next couple of years is to grow the strength of the school and the students and the community, work with business partners, just like yourselves and Councilmembers, so we can put on our very own Nuppecker. If you've ever seen the Nuppecker, Councilmember Cantu, if that has not surprised you by any means, it will surprise the whole county. Talk about beds and heads. You're going to have full occupancy when we do four shows in a row, I kid you not. We're going to have not just guest artists, but principal ballerinas that are world-renowned to come and perform with us. So you offering this to us this year is just the starting point of it. As far as me coming back next year and asking for this again, I can commit to you right now that the tickets that are being sold for Saturday night must be bottom line. I have done the due diligence of numbering all 964 seats in the auditorium. Fun, fun. And if you want reserved seating, which you have to have, you have to go online. The only way to go online is putting your email address in. Guess what? I'm going to email you. I'm going to thank you, and I'm going to ask you, would you please kindly tell us, you don't have to tell us where, but please kindly tell us, did you stay in a hotel?
Okay, that's good. And why didn't you have it here again? Like the event center would have been a good place.
Absolutely. So we actually have a 12-foot long ship, and the mast of our pirate ship is 20 feet tall. Our dancers are paraprofessional, they travel across the floor. That issue that you brought up, actually, I addressed at a council meeting last year with our wonderful city manager, Mrs. Turner. We had a long discussion with the former council members about not having enough space here on the stage. And within months, I believe Parks and Recreation built us a beautiful stage for the community to use.
Yes, I remember that one, yes.
So we in fact have already lined up several performances here in Florisville. Believe it or not, we're going to somehow put our ship on a flip for Peter Festival, so get ready, Peter Pan's coming again. And we're also going to be performing a snippet here during not only the July Fest that's coming up in a couple of months, but later on as well. So Peter Pan doesn't stop Saturday. We're going to keep it going.
And Council, any other comments?
Well, the only thing I've got to say, this is not, in the city, to me, that's the county funded, something that the county should have funded, you know, and.
Did you, did you go to La Vernea to fund this money, or the council's in La Vernea?
So the school district is run by the school district itself. They have been very gracious, just like a lot of school districts are, in allowing us to do the student matinee at no cost, that their students can attend. As far as your question that you just asked, we are in Florisville. Our school's here. Let me just finish real quick. Our training is here, our school is here. We're here three, four days a week. So when you ask me, why aren't we here, we are. The only problem we have, Councilmember, is that we need space. You build me a theater, the Roman said it, you build it, and we will come. You know what I mean? We have no problem in performing in other places. However, when I have my guest artist doing 12 foite turns on point, I'm sure you do not want your granddaughter to be on concrete. She needs to be on proper flooring, which we don't have here. So I'm telling you right now, I'm going to work very hard and trying to work hard with the city and the school district to bring stuff here.
You've got to understand that us as a council and the mayor, we're a council for the city of Florisville, the city of Florisville only, not for the county, not for the other surrounding towns or whatever. And I'm grateful that you've come over here, our grandkids and our young kids, you look like you see them growing.
Or your wife.
Yeah, well, I mean, and, but the thing is that it's a hotel motel tax, I'm not going to get in trouble for it, you know, it's, if you would have had it here in Florisville, no problem, but it's not here for.
So let me ask you a question. If you had a name artist, you like rock and roll, Aerosmith? Let me just give you, let me just give you an example.
I think we're strained from everything tonight. Excuse me, I think we're strained from, from the, the topic on hand right now. And so we have to discuss whether the council will approve this, and we're strained from other areas. So I'd like to give the opportunity to other council members to see if they have any comments or questions.
Absolutely.
Mr. Huck, if Mr. Baker says they meet all the requirements, he's the governor body of that, and are you, is he?
We're doing it legal. The city council is the final authority on, on that. They're just an advisory board, they have no legal or, and nothing they say is precedent for here. So what I was doing as while we were talking, I pulled up the actual tax code here on 351.101. It says revenue from municipal hotel occupancy tax may be used only to promote tourism and the convention and hotel industry, and that use is limited to the following. And number four under that is the encouragement, promotion, improvement, and application of the arts, including instrumental and vocal music, dance, drama, folk art, creative writing, yada, 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 yada. And then it goes down to an execution and, sorry, and other arts related to presentation, performance, execution, and exhibition of these major art forms. So there's nothing specific that says the venue has to be within the location, so long as it promotes the arts and brings people to the location.
Whether it's in San Antonio, Houston, California, wherever.
If it brings people to Florisville and it promotes Florisville, then per the statute, even if the venue is outside of the city limits.
So in other words, Korn Sadie, Cole, Plaza Town, or whatever, come, come, and we have, and they give a good presentation of how she did, we're able to give whatever amount of money.
If you can show that it'll promote Florisville and bring heads to Florisville.
There's 30 minutes away, there's only 20 minutes away.
I'm just saying what the statute says, that's what the reading.
With her school being in Florisville, she's promoting Florisville with her school?
That would include the promotion and improvement and application to the school here, so that would promote the arts in Florisville. But that's a, that's a decision.
That includes all the hotel, Holiday Inn, Walmart, Sears.
As long as it meets one of the nine criteria on here.
You know, but I'm just trying to stay within our limits.
Certainly, sure.
Well, you're meeting number four, Walmart won't meet number four.
If I wouldn't mind sharing with you.
I would.
Our brochures, by the way, I want to pass them out to you, I have extras. It says our location. In fact, not only are we located in Florisville, we're located in a historical building, we're located at the J.C. Terminal. If you've ever been downtown, you can't miss our 15 by 6 foot window. This was passed out to 800 students this morning, 800. I have 1,000 more in my car for Saturday night. When people ask us where we're at, our school's not in La Vernea, our school's downtown Florisville. When people ask where that is, I say, do you know where the peanut is? Absolutely, it's right across from it.
So the only legal guidance I gave is if it promotes Florisville, if it's promoting La Vernea, then that's not, doesn't fit the criteria. But if it promotes Florisville, then under the performance section of item four, it would fit the criteria.
Okay, so after extensive discussion, I will entertain a motion to, for CNA to disperse hotel motel tax funds in the amount of $3,000 to the Wilson County School of Ballet and
I'd like to make a motion that we approve it, since our school's here in Florisville, and our advertisement brochure states Florisville on it.
I have a motion on the floor to accept, I mean, to, excuse me, to disperse the hotel motel tax funds. Do I have a second?
Is that what the, in fifth?
Yes. To disperse hotel motel tax funds of $3,000 to the Wilson County School of Ballet and Performing Arts. I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll say.
I have a second on the floor. Citizens' comments at this time?
Yes, and it's mostly a question, and you're right, Chris, promoting Florisville is a key factor. Also, as you indicated, it is one of the nine categories that is acceptable. But we haven't really talked very much about, are they going to put heads to beds in Florisville?
Right, and so that's, that's the start on there of A, is revenue from municipal hotel occupancy tax may be used only to promote tourism and the convention and hotel industry. So tourism ties in with hotels and everything else, so like they have it.
I understand the promotion, but my question is, are they putting substantial heads to beds in Florisville? How long, how many days is this event going to take place?
If you'd like to answer, I think that that's on the application.
Absolutely, I think you asked me three questions, I'll try to go in order. The first one is, how am I promoting? I am working, this is my second.
Sorry, the question is, are you going to have substantial heads to beds in Florisville? Is this event going to be here for more than one night?
Correct, so I'm trying to answer that question. If you let me finish, then you'll know the full compensating answer. The first question you asked me is, how am I promoting? This is my second year in the new name of the school. I have severely promoted our school to be one, hold on, one well-known, and two, for people to know. If people don't know what we are, they're not going to come see us, right? Am I right? Second of all, it will, it'll get there. The second question that you asked is, how will it get heads to beds? We have already many people who stayed last night in a hotel. It was more convenient for them to be in Florisville than in fact in San Antonio, they didn't want to deal with the traffic. And then number three, we have several, in fact, myself, my instructor, my guest artists, we have in fact one student who's bringing 23 members of her family to come see her. They don't, you know, you only have so many beds in your home, right? And you love your relatives to a certain extent. As far as your question of how many days this is, we had tech rehearsal last night, we had our matinee show today, they're off tomorrow, and the performance is Saturday night. So potentially, typically speaking, a production is anywhere from four days to three days.
So do you know how many people are staying here, or you don't know? You're just guessing?
I'm not guessing. I'm staying, I want to sleep.
I have another.
And we've gone to the citizen comments, part of our past discussion.
Right, we have another gentleman who would like to speak.
I think, I think all of y'all know me, I'm Scott Neeson, I'm the FEDC. And just this week, I talked to a lady with a restaurant, and she's hurting for business. You know, if this was, if we're going to have 964 people at your event in La Vernea?
That's what it seats?
That's what it seats, maximum. There's not 964 people here in this town that will eat supper after the event or before the event in our restaurants. And if y'all are going to give out this money, let's try to make it go as far as we can to the restaurants, the gas stations, and all the other commerce people. And that money, those people are going to drive to La Vernea, they're not going to drive back to Florisville to eat. They're not going to drive back to Florisville just to get gas, they're going to go home wherever they go. And so I hope y'all take that in consideration when y'all vote.
Okay, thank you. Any other citizens' comments regarding this issue? Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Councilman Neeson to approve the hotel motel tax funding of $3,000 to the Wilson County School of Ballet and Performing Arts. I have a second on the floor by Councilman Jacob Silva. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, three, two.
I'm going to abstain, because I'm not sure about the, the law.
Okay, so we have three, one, and one. Monica, thank you.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 3D, consideration and action to approve a subdivision and final plat request for Ted and Virginia Alphato, 1319 Southern Springs Road. Our community development director.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We have a, it's a very simple 1.4 acre subdivision, a little shy, a four acre original parcel. They're requesting to subdivide, and have prepared a final plat to record. On May 10th, it went before planning and zoning, and it was approved and recommended approval for, or a council to approve as well.
Any questions from the council? Can I just write?
Can we have some time?
Yes, in just one moment, just, just one moment, thank you.
Those are property owners.
Oh, okay.
So do you want me to move, make a motion?
I will entertain a motion at this time, if there's no question, hold on one second, let me finish, please. I will entertain a motion, if there are no other questions from the council, to approve the, a subdivision and final plat request from Ted and Virginia Alphato.
And that would include questions to the property owners. If you want to have a discussion with them, they would need to speak before the motion.
Okay, if any of the councilors, you can go ahead and come up, that's fine.
But do you want me to approve?
Hold on, they want to speak, okay. If the council has any questions for the property owners or?
This is discussion with the property owners, this is before citizen comments.
Jeff, I have a question. On Southern Springs, are you going to go into that 1.14 acres, are you tearing down that house right from the beginning?
Yes, I am.
Well, the speaker, the owner, the, the buyer is. See, the, the reason that my husband Ted and I are here is because the city is charging us $400 for having this to be considered by the planning and.